The time is 6:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM. The time is now 7:02 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We will now serve in honor of silence. You may be seated. Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. UMBLE ISD focuses on providing a education that is personalized to every single student's interests and goals. This past year, we introduced a new Career and Technical Education elective for sixth graders. The course provides students across the district with hands-on opportunities that allow them to discover their personal strengths by exploring multiple educational pathways before reaching high school. They actually get to explore all the different career pathways in four-week segments, allowing them to see what each pathway would look like. Tonight's inspiring moment highlights this new course.
The sixth-grade CTE Exploration Wheel grew out of an idea and a need to help students better prepare for what opportunities UMBLE ISD offers in high school. And so, we had some feedback from Dr. Fagan's Student Advisory Committee that meets often with her and gives her some ideas to help perpetuate throughout the district to better prepare kids for their experience in UMBLE ISD. And so, they came to us and said, "We want to see more earlier on, so that we're better prepared to make those choices." We came up with the idea that in sixth grade, we wanted to show kids everything that we had to offer in little segments from expert teachers. And so, now, as a sixth grader enrolled in the Wheel, they are able to sit and learn just about everything that we have to offer and then potentially explore what things they need to do in the coming years to enroll in those courses.
Students having the opportunity to be part of the CTE Exploration Wheel is huge. It's significant. It's not something really done anywhere else. The fact that they bring different educators in with all different backgrounds and they base it on projects really kind of guides their way.
A lot of the projects are pretty fun. It being hands-on means you're working together to make something really cool or good.
CTE is one of those things that brings kids to school. We absolutely love to have students on our campuses, particularly when they're having fun and enjoying and getting to learn by doing. And so, this sixth-grade Exploration Wheel gives them a taste of that at a very early age, so that then it's a passion that carries on throughout all of high school.
So, like around the second week of like the video course, they came around, they showed us all their presentations and everything, and it just opened my mind to many more things that I can do besides like editing and everything. I can do many more like drawing, graphic design with audio and make into like a whole animation and just probably start something new that I probably did not think I could actually try.
I think it's important for kids to understand that it's totally okay if they don't know what they want to do. It's totally okay to understand that CTE has something for everybody.
You could do stuff like health science, J-Rex OTC, you could do like the military kind of stuff. You have AV graphic and editing, you've got culinary, you've got which is like cooking, you have just something, you have like hospitality, which is basically like amusement parks, stuff like that.
Guess what? This is not like your traditional math class. This is, this class is just for engaging. If your kid can't come back and tell you something that they've learned differently that they didn't know before than we even haven't done our job.
Basically, the CTE Wheel program is supposed to show you like what, how all the jobs and all these different careers and jobs you can take down your path of life and you can like, and it paints a better picture and you know what that stuff is, how it works, and how to do it.
This CTE class gave me a better idea on what I want to do with my life. Some classes that I like to do, maybe I'm not very good at, so I have to take that into consideration about in the future, high school.
So, if every CTE student can end their journey with focus and direction, then our job is done.
The sixth-grade CTE Exploration Wheel is available to all sixth graders. It is now on all UMBLE ISD campuses, and if you're interested in enrolling, you simply need to contact your counselor and they will make sure that they sign you up for that appropriate course.
By the way, I just have to say a shout-out to Larkin, who couldn't be here tonight, but we came up with this idea and gave him like five minutes to put it together. We said, "Okay, we have this idea, five minutes to put it together, a budget, order everything, go, and implement it." And so, can you imagine finding the instructors for every single area of expertise, training them, getting their hands-on materials, creating a schedule where they rotate through the different middle schools, so every campus has that expert? It was incredible. It was really incredible what they pulled together and the timeline that they did. And it's a true effort in helping every single student start to own their own pathway. Instead of us just saying, "Well, you want to graduate from high school, that's what you got to do." Them saying, "No, I loved culinary," or "I loved the STEM piece," or "I loved the graphic design, and now I know what I want to do." So, it's just, it's such a critical piece of everything that we're trying to provide for students in our district. I would like to recognize a few of the leaders who helped create and implement the course. Donnie Bodron, Assistant Superintendent for Middle Schools. Donnie loves those new ideas at the last minute to, you know, disrupt all the schedules. Great idea. And they did it anyway, which I love because in education, we kind of, we love what we've always done. And Dr. Melissa Lee, Senior Director of Personalized Student Success. So, thank you to both of you for all of your hard work on this particular project. Our CTE Director, like I mentioned, Larkin Lesweare, is not with us tonight because he's presenting at the Career and Technical Association of Texas Conference. We are very proud of the innovative work occurring in CTE classes, and in fact, because of his work, some of which you saw here, Larkin was actually honored today by the partnership like Houston with a Four Under Forty Leadership Award for our community. So, congratulations to Larkin and to the whole department on a job well done, and thank you to our middle schools for being so flexible in the implementation of something brand-new into their campuses and on their master schedules. So, congratulations, everyone. All right. Everybody's quiet tonight. There we go. Thank you. Thank you. That's what we wanted. I know. Well, thank you, Mr. Scarfo, for doing that. I was going to applaud, but it seemed like, you know, it should be you guys. So, away we go. All right. Next, Centennial Elementary School has received some state recognition. Irene, oh man, Irene's last name is going to get me. I'm going to do my very best, though. Nigagliani? Oh, wow, yay, okay. Chairperson of the Association for Learning Environments, Southern Region Foundation, is here tonight to tell us more about that. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight to share with you and highlight Centennial Elementary School. Okay. As Dr. Fagan said, my name is Irene Nigagliani. I'm the President of Intu Architecture out of Dallas, and I am here as the Southern Region Foundation Chair for the Association for Learning Environments. The Association for Learning Environments is dedicated to enhancing the places where children learn. The Southern Region was formed as the region's philanthropic arm, so that we could help support that goal. We are proud to be a partner with TASA and TASB and the Exhibit of School Architecture. Since 1987, the Exhibit of School Architecture is a showcase of Texas school facilities, highlighting the excellent work that school districts are doing across our state. Each year, a 12-member jury made up of TASA, TASB, and Association for Learning Environment members convene to review the submissions and determine the winners. Projects are judged on six major stars of distinction, which are design, innovation, community, planning, value, and transformation. This year, we had a total of 46 entries, 22 of which received at least one star of distinction. Every year, projects that earn more than four stars of distinction are included as finalists for the Codell Class Award. This very prestigious award was created to honor Bill Codell's long-lasting contributions to the field of educational architecture. This year, we were excited that we had three projects that earned the prestigious Codell Class Award designation. They are DOS Elementary School in Austin ISD, Gerald DeYoung Agricultural Science Center in KD ISD, and of course, Centennial Elementary here in UMBLE ISD. Centennial Elementary School was a unanimous winner when all the jury scores were assembled. There was no doubt in anyone's mind from the initial reviews that we had a project which elevated the learning experiences for student, staff, and community. This project truly exemplifies excellence in school planning and design. The jury was truly taken aback by the project. You have to realize the jury works independently and individually, and then those scores are all tallied together and brought together, and those projects that score higher move to the top, but Centennial was always at the top of the list. Some of the comments that they shared, for example, in design, some of the jury members said, "This is a wild factor design. The learning environments remind me of a discovery museum." Value-wise, it talked about durable finishes like porcelain tile and masonry veneer that helped improve the value and increase the value of the building. Innovation, a locomotive, dinosaur, horsewood carriage, and other fun educational tools spark creativity. Community demonstrates pride in a historically forward building in the heart of the neighborhood. Planning, outstanding job of bringing planning to reality, highlighting the district's educational vision in the program. And lastly, transformation, clear example of a project that inspires, motivates, and transforms the learning and teaching experience for students, staff. I want to extend my sincerest congratulations to the UMBLE ISD and Joiner Architects. Your project is an inspiration and a celebration for students. You can see your project and all other submissions at the website, TexasSchoolArchitecture.org. With that, I'd be happy to get everybody to assemble, so we can get a picture and celebrate this great project, and I'll start the clapping this time.
It's so pretty. I do want to mention that Dr. Roger Brown, Ms. Lucy Schultz, they did a ton of work on that campus also. They were integral and critical to the design team of those pods, really bringing the Google Meets the Children's Museum to life, but in a way that really celebrated UMBLE ISD. And Jamie Mout and her team did tons of work on the graphic design, the themes. I remember the big thicket. I mean, we've been through a lot of stuff to get Centennial just right, because we wanted to celebrate 100 years of UMBLE ISD. We wanted to showcase the vision for learning in our district and also value the past. So, anyway, congratulations to everybody. That was a true team effort, and all the best things come out of that kind of experience. Allison and the train, I believe that idea came from her. We all said, "A train." And so, it truly was a team effort. I'm sure I'm missing people, but everybody came together with great ideas and just unimaginable things and put it together in one school that is truly a piece of art and a place for children that anybody would want their child. And it also, and Joby and I were talking about this before the meeting, one of the little-known things about Centennial, and maybe a future star category for you all, is that it's a very safe building. And we built in to that building some of the most important new thinking in school safety post-Sandy Hook into Centennial Elementary School. And so, we don't talk about it a lot, because we don't want the bad guys to know we're up to, but it really is truly a model for school safety as well as innovation and child-centeredness. So, congratulations to everybody. And that concludes our, whatever this was.
Commendations and recognitions.
Commendations and recognitions. Yes, that's what it was. I just love that project. So, thank you, Joiner Architects, and thank you for the award. We sincerely appreciate the recognition.
The next item is public comment. However, no one has signed up to address the Board, so we will move on to the next item, comments by individual Board members. I'll begin with Mr. Sitten.
Thank you, Madam President. So, a couple things. I'll start with Centennial. When this all came to be, Dr. Brown, we, he started, I'll never forget, we were in the maintenance conference room, and he sketched out this idea of having these wings with these pods, you know? And you start looking at it, you're like, "Oh, my gosh, this thing's going to stretch out for like two miles," because we were coming off of stacking academic wings and stuff. So, you couple, you couple Dr. Brown's idea, and I think you brought that from Oklahoma, if I remember. There was a facility, a facility in Oklahoma, something similar to that. And then, you take the children's museum aspects that Dr. Fagan has brought to UMBLE ISD, and you put those two together. Then, you add the key component, the third component, and that's Joiner Architects. Because if you think about some of the recent innovative designs, Cyfair had a building that we went and looked at, I don't know, 10 years ago, maybe, and it was, well, I don't know if we could ever do that. And so, you go to Joiner and you say, "Hey, here's some ideas. Make it your own and see what happens." And they've won awards with Westlake Middle School, so it's no surprise that they win an award like this for what they did with Centennial Elementary. So, hats off to y'all. Y'all have really knocked it out of the ballpark, your last couple of designs. Not that, not that we're surprised by that by any stretch, but those two facilities have been fantastic, so thank y'all for that. Also, UMBLE High School has the longest-running Alumni Association that meets once a year, the second weekend of June every year, for 87 years. And so, this year, what we did, Jamie Mout and her team helped set this up, we set up a bus tour, because most of those folks went to Lakeland Elementary back in the day, like me, and so, we showed them the new Lakeland Elementary. Then, we showed them Centennial Elementary, and they were absolutely blown away by the old UMBLE pod. The entire campus is awesome, but the old UMBLE pod with the Jewel Theater signage, the bank, and just all the stuff that goes in, they were all like, "Oh, man, they captured, oh, I bet they forgot, nope, there it is, there's the other thing." Yes, they just, they were really blown away by that. So, it was really neat to be able to share some of that history, and that was what we were trying to accomplish when we named it Centennial Elementary, to celebrate 100 years of education in UMBLE ISD. So, I'm just thankful for the partnership, thankful for the administration, and thank you for being here. It's been a while. We hadn't got to see you in a long time. Thanks for being here to deliver the award and the good news, so we appreciate that. Lastly, I want to tip my hat to our HR department. We got a glowing report in executive session about our hiring. We're well ahead of the curve at this point. The salary increases that my colleagues approved has helped, but it's, it's a team effort. When you look at benefits, you look at our private healthcare plan, you look at the safety of our campuses, you look at the quality of work and the support that teachers are getting in UMBLE ISD, and it truly, truly has become a destination district, which is something that when, when Mr. Gardner came on, I know Mr. Scarfo led the charge to move us from dead last in our peer group as far as, we were. We were dead last in teacher salaries whenever Rick got here, and now it looks like we're going to be number two in that same peer group. So, thank you for all your hard work. I think we're going to be like number three in the state in teacher pay, but it goes well beyond that. I made a comment that, you know, that may be the hook that gets someone in the door, but it's how do you keep them in the door? And benefits, quality of life, work-life balance, no fear of failure, because we give you the opportunity to go out and do what's right for kids, and it's just a great place to be. And I've said it several years now, and it always gets better each year, that I couldn't imagine raised, being raised in a district better than UMBLE ISD, raising my kids in a district better than UMBLE ISD, and now my grandkids. So, I'm just grateful to be a part of it. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be part of this great organization, and Madam President, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you. And I think along those lines, with the rating that, the ranking that came out with UMBLE ISD being ranked number one out of 48 districts in the greater Houston metroplex as the best place to teach, and I think that's a good reason why all those things that, from facilities to benefits, to support, and not support all over, and not just in the Houston area, but if you look at the numbers, if you dug down a little deeper, we're in that same category, we're in the top 6% of the state, in the entire state. That's 1,030 districts, so that's pretty darn good. And then, if you look at another one of their categories, the best teachers in the state, and I think these kind of things go hand-in-hand, we're in the top 4% of all districts in the state in that category. So, I think they all really just tie together, and it does make it, to use your phrase, a destination district, we've talked about that for quite a while. And I think these, the kind of things outside that show us that we're not just living in a bubble thinking that about ourselves, so people see it. And I just, one other thing I just wanted to talk about, seeing the CTE, the middle school, the Wheel, it may, it may not seem like that huge a deal, but I got to tell you something, it's a, it's a huge deal, and my perspective might be a little different than some folks here, but I remember going back to even before I got on the Board, the first go-round, and back in 2007, 2008, that was a fight, and it was even a fight in the legislature to, to be pushing these kinds of things, where it wasn't just a four-year degree was the only path possible for a student. And to see where we've come in, I don't know, the last 10, 15 years even, if you go back and you see how we've moved down that path, it really warms my heart to see where we have got to today, because it didn't happen by magic. It was a lot of hard work, resources put at it, getting the right folks in the right places, and the opportunities that students have today to really look at and explore things they may want to do. And the one young man, he really hit it, and he said, "You know, and I may find that I'm not so good at that, so I do something else." But that's, that's what it's all about, is to kind of find out, what do you have a passion for? Does it, does it make sense? Do you like it? When you, even though you might have a passion, do you really like it once you start really doing it? So, it is just so, it's just such a great thing that we've gotten to that level. And, you know, Dr. Fagan and all our staff over these years, and I know it started, it was baby steps at first, going, going back to 2010 and whatever, but we've come a long, long way, so I'm just so happy about that. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kertschofford.
Madam President, thank you. Now, just congratulations to Joiner Architects, and happy birthday to Scott Brady. Forty, Scott? Yeah? There you go. Checks in the mail. I just, real, real quickly, I brought it up last month. How do you keep up with the district, right? I mean, looking from the outside in, how do you keep up with all it's, it's so big? And I alluded to it a month ago, and not everybody's on Twitter, but I'll tell you what, I follow Twitter and follow as much of the district as possible, and we were talking about it in closed session, the excitement, you can't deny what you're looking at. The teachers, they've got all the workshops going on, the principals and the APs that, but you can't deny what you're looking at, the excitement. So, yes, we say destination district. What Rick and the team are doing, it's exciting, and shout-out to UMBLE ISD. If you're on Twitter, follow the district and follow the schools. It's, it's a, it's a good way to keep up with what's going on from, so, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things. The Innovation and Exploration Wheel, I'm excited about that myself. I have a sixth grader, so we'll be testing that out, and we are excited. I think I'm more excited than him, and I think that dovetails into, he'll be attending Westlake, right? So, I want to say thank you to the partnership and innovation from Joiner Architects. I know part of that family very well. So, again, Mr. Joiner, thank you. You guys, the team, amazing. When I show some of my friends from across the country, some of the architectural monstrosities, Westlake, Autumn Ridge, right, the Groves, I'll sometimes ask, you know, just see what they're going to say, and they're like, "Oh, that's a, that's a pretty nice junior college," right? I mean, they're just, it's funny to see what people think when you just show them the picture. the picture. And I think that, that really drives, again, it's, it's a whole environment that is driving teachers and really good people our way. I was up in Fort Worth for the Tasby Training late last month, and again, in just talking with my peers, Ullman ISD is there. Now, I'm not saying we're resting on our laurels, but it's just really cool to see that the leadership here continues to push the envelope from teacher pay to the entire environment, why teachers want to stay here, looking at, I think, what are we at, a 96% retention rate? We're trying to push 98%. I think that's pretty huge. So again, I just want to say it's pretty good. Lastly, and I know we talked about this early last, I know we've talked about in previous sessions, but the barber school, again, just innovation. I really wish I could partake in that, but I'm bald right now. But it's just, I like, you know, I, I just, it, it talks about innovation, right? The story behind it, it just really, it touches me, right, that kids are in a bathroom cutting each other's hair and you saw, you know, we didn't take that as a problem. We created a solution, opportunity now. That's, that's what we should be doing in the education arena. So again, I just want to say thank you to the district. And again, I'm just really happy to serve alongside this team.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, Madam President. So Mr. Scarfo stole my thunder a little bit, but I am so proud, and this team just gives me so much joy that Ullman ISD was ranked number one out of 48 school districts in the Houston area by niche. It's, it's really incredible and just kudos to the team. You know, all the teachers and staff and, and all of you, you guys, I just really am proud of you, really proud of you. I'm excited for Autumn Ridge Gator Fest, Gator Parade on Saturday, July 30th. I absolutely cannot wait. And y'all, this is the last school board meeting. The next school board meeting will be on the first day of school. So I want to welcome everybody back to school and wish everybody a safe and happy first day. It'll be so fast. So thank you. Have a great day.
Think about that one.
They're going to boo you.
Thank you. They're like, not yet. But you're right, it's the first day of school coming up. That's right. Mrs. Morrison?
You know, that's a good point. I hadn't thought about, well, as a retired principal, I'll say this, there's a lot of teachers already on board. Because if you drive around the district, which I've taken the last few days to drive around the district, because I've had a lot of fun. Yeah, congratulations, Centennial. Joiner, thank you. Huge thank you. Allison, beautiful school. It is just fun to walk through that building. You want to stay. You don't want to leave. You know, you want to be a kid again. It's just awesome. And you think about all the other new buildings that are coming up, Lakeland and all those. And we talk about the inside of the building, but let's talk about outside of the building right now. For those of you who haven't driven around, you need to go to Woodland Hills. There is a giant dragon. And by the way, it is one good-looking playground. Now, I just want to go over there and stay personally, but that's okay. But I, I called him a dinosaur tonight, but I got corrected. He's a, he, he is a dragon. But anyway, but as time goes by, all of our schools, a lot of our schools will have all different kinds of different playgrounds, not only inside of the school, outside of the school, so our communities can enjoy them and enjoy a safe place to be and a safe place to have fun. Also, I, I want to encourage everybody to drive around and see the construction. For those of us from Old Ullman, drive by Ullman High School, it is absolutely looking outstanding. I can't wait just to see the faces of those kids when they walk in that building this year. And it won't be finished, finished, but just the differences, it, it is just unbelievable. Kingwood Middle, yes, Autumn Ridge, so many different spots. We are a destination because for some of us, we get to visit with other districts a lot. I, I have a habit of talking about Ullman a lot. We far exceed most everybody in the state, in the United States, if the truth be known. We, we talk about school safety, when we talk about curriculum, when we talk about buildings, we talk about school environment. We are very, very privileged. This district has a great staff. I mean, phenomenal what we've gone through. I just want to say, a lot of people are jealous of us right now, deservingly so. But I just want to say, also, when you consider options for kids now, Mr. Scarfo, you're right. How wonderful it is for our kids, some of our kids, they will own their own barbary, their barber. They will be a barber. They will own their own shop. But they have the option now to go and find whatever it is they want. I can't tell you how excited I am about that middle school wheel because we see so many different options for kids. But I'll stop there. I just want to say, congratulations, welcome back to many because they're already there because I catch them out at dinner in spots and they're sitting together, talking about what they're going to do because they've gone to workshops and they're ready to implement. So congratulations and, and I'm excited for the new year.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. Okay, well, I could sit here and just say ditto, 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 all the way across. There are so many wonderful things happening, but right now I'll focus in on number one, the CTE exploration will. I know everybody chatted about that a little bit. Totally impressed with that. The only thing I hate is that my kids, I don't have any sixth graders, they're all older than that. I do wish they would have had that opportunity, but I'm really thankful that the incoming sixth graders like Mr. Holmes' son and, and going forward, that they'll have that opportunity. I, I just don't think, you know, today in education, to me, that is just one of the, the best things that we can do is just give them that chance. Because you're right, when they go to high school, a lot, my kids even would say, I don't know, you know, I want to try this, I want to try that, you know, but then you kind of get in one pathway because that's how, you know, graduation works. But to have that opportunity, to know what you're good at and what you want to try, it's a great opportunity. Also, congratulations to Joiner and Centennial. And I, I used to be a member of A4LE. I think I just need to renew my membership for a very long time. But yeah, the school is amazing. And, and to me, the way it celebrates Ullman ISD and the city of Ullman, it just can't be touched. So I'm so glad, of course, even if you had not won, I'd be like, oh, well, I don't know who those judges were, but, but congratulations. Because it's truly, truly an amazing campus. And, and I would agree with Dr. Fagan. I, I think the category of safety should be added to one of those stars, so. But thank you very much. And lastly, I know Mrs. Parker mentioned the start of school, but I will say, enjoy the rest of your summer and the 100-degree days and looking forward to a great school year, though. Okay, that's all I have. Our next item is comments by the administration. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you so much. You know, when people say to me, why do you guys go back so early this year? We can say, because it's 100 degrees, there's no reason not to be inside, right? And it's much nicer in October and February when we take breaks, which is another thing that our teachers really appreciate, is that year-round feel and allowing them to have time off with their families when, when it's not 103 degrees. So those are really positive things. I agree with Mr., Mrs. Morrison. If you haven't been by Woodland Hills, you should. We're very excited. Jonathan did a photo shoot out there the other day with some students and they wouldn't stop getting on the equipment. And they weren't supposed to be on it because the surface wasn't down, but their parents were there, so you know, it was all okay. But it was, it was really, really a positive thing. And, and I guess that's what I would say that I love most about Twitter and Ullman ISD is it's so positive. It is truly a positive presence of everything that is great during the PD sessions in the summer, during, you know, when they're looking at a new campus, whatever the case may be, the stuff that people are putting out is just, it's so positive because that's how they're feeling. And, and they're sharing it with everyone. So it's one of the things that takes a really big district and makes it feel small because we can all share with each other the experiences we're having, whether, you know, progress updates at Ullman High School get put on there, so we all get to see it. The facilities that are going up really are amazing. And one of, one of Joiner's competitions says, man, they hit a home run with Centennial Elementary School, you know? Competition hates to see that, but congratulations to you guys because it really was and is a home run. So yes, the next board meeting is the first day of school and we are gearing up. We are finishing out our professional development for the summer. We're trying to get our construction projects closed down and getting all of our hiring done, and we're doing really well. But the people that think we have the summers off could not be further from the truth. That's when we get ready for our brand-new school year. So things are going really well, very excited for this year. We have a lot of exciting things. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to share was, I don't even remember where I was, but I was told that 98% of the rental property in Ullman ISD is filled, that there is only 2% remaining, and the real estate market is very, very hot. And one of the reasons is, is because people want to live here because they want their children in our schools. And since our schools are pretty full, they can't transfer them in, and so they have to live here. And so that is, that is one of the reasons why 98% of all rentals in our district are full. And our real estate is, is very popular and turning over quickly. And we think that's a huge compliment to us and we want to just make sure we continue down that path. So I think that's it for me.
Thank you very much. We will now have updates from our Board Associations and Committees. First committee is the Advocacy Committee. Mrs. Parker?
The Advocacy Committee did not meet in July, but we will be back at it in August.
Thank you. Audit Committee, Mrs. Morrison?
Okay. The Audit Department is completing inventories. They've completed five in the first two weeks of July with three more to perform. Once done, they can publish the safety risk assessment and publish the audit plan and schedule of work for 2022, 2023, which will be covered in our Audit Committee either in August or September.
Thank you. Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitten?
Thank you, Madam President. Just real quick, we got an update on the 2018 bond projects as well as the 2022 upcoming projects. I know there's a lot of, there've been a lot of questions out there about some of the 2018 projects that haven't been completed and we're going out selling bonds and starting 2022. All the board members should have gotten the sequencing for 2018 and 2022 from Gary Whittle. He's been working with our Bond Council and working with our Construction Department on that. And then for those at home, you can go to the website, go to our district, I think it's our district, and go down to Bond Construction, then Bond 2018. You can see where each project is, is in the phase. So every project that was approved in 2018 is in some form of completion, whether it's, you know, a big challenge since COVID has been permitting. And so for my board colleagues, what you'll see is in that sequencing, we've been, we've included, I'll say, Gary Whittle has included anywhere from eight to 12 months for permitting alone. And so that's been a big delay on a lot of our projects. So if you look at like the multipurpose rooms, some of the, the group ones that should have been done first are just now getting started mainly because of permitting issues. So, but we do have a lot of good things like North, North Agbarn, the Emergency Operations Center is, is, is well on its way. North Agbarn is, is complete. Charles Street Stadium should be ready to go at the beginning of the school year. We just talked about multipurpose buildings. North Belt Elementary is, is rocking and rolling. Rebuild of Kingwood Middle's ready to open. Autumn Ridge ready to open. Locker room renovations at the middle schools. Third gyms at Kingwood, Kay Park. And then also, we've already mentioned the Ullman High School renovations. All that stuff is, dirt's turning right now. So every project from 2018 is in some form of, of the process at this point. So just want to make sure you all got that sequencing so you will have an idea of, of when those are prioritized to begin, permitting and all that. That is a working, living, breathing document because as needs change, things can be adjusted on that sequencing. It just gives the Construction Department a, a kind of a playbook on where we're at and where we're going, and then that can be adjusted as need be.
Thank you very much. Okay, Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that's me. We did meet. We started to review and put down some language for the board operating procedures. Then I met with Stephanie to kind of talk about some draft language. Still need to schedule a meeting with the superintendent to review that same thing, and then it'll come back to the committee after we receive a draft to, to look at, to see what tweaks before we bring it to the full board. Okay, Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, thank you. No report specifically for the Finance Committee, but bond sale is going to take place Thursday, and I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Biddy is hosting a bond sale watch party in his office at, what is it, 9:00 AM? He'll have coffee and pastries, so please come.
Thank you very much. Education Foundation, Mr. Kertschoff?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, Mr. Holmes?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Action items from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Kertschoff, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations with addendum as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0. Moving to item five, our Consent Agenda. Item 5A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. Item 5B, Approval of Minutes, I'm sorry, let me go back, Consent? Okay. Item 5B, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting Held on Monday, June 27th, 2022. Consent. Item 5C, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments Including Non-Recurring Requests, Compensation Plan, Playgrounds, and Gym. Consent. Item 5D, Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent. Item 5E, Tax Refunds. Consent. Item 5F, Truth and Taxation Designation. Consent. Item 5G, Board Authorization of Inter-Local Agreements. Consent. Item 5H, 2022, 2023, Ullman ISD Student Lunch Pricing. Consent. Item 5I, Approval of RFP Number 2023-05, Graduation Supplies. Consent. Item 5J, Approval of RFP Number 2021-007R, -14 Educational and Curriculum Subscriptions, Internet and Web-Based Access and Software. Consent. Item 5K, Approval of RFP Number 2021-005R, General Merchandise. Consent. Item 5L, Approval of RFP Number 2023-08, Photography Services. Consent. Item 5M, Approval of RFP Number 2023-103, School Safety Products and Services. Consent. Item 5N, Approval of RFP Number 2023-07, Student Accident Insurance. Consent. Item 5O, Approval of RFP Number 2023-102, Services, Repairs, Maintenance, Installation, District-Wide. Consent. Item 5P, 2022, 2023, Student Code of Conduct. Consent. Item 5Q, Deductive Change Order. Consent. Item 5R, Change Order Number Four, Middle School Number 10. Item 5S, Change Order Number Four, Emergency Operations Center Additions and Renovations. Consent. Item 5T, 2022, 2023, Construction and Construction-Related Purchases. 5T, 2022, 2023, construction and construction-related purchases, consent. Item 5U, general contractor selection for 2022, multi-campus child nutrition projects, consent. Mr. Kertschoffer, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve consent agenda items A through V.
You?
You.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll take one for the team.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes, 7-0.
Take Ms. Parker.
There are no action items tonight. We'll move on to our information items. Item 7A, the 2022, 2023 Parent-Student Handbook. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Seeing none, moving to item 7B, financial services report, is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? The time is now 7:53 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.